So I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lewisburg area Board of School Directors. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thanks for everyone joining us this evening. We do have two quick announcements. The board online with us this evening, with the exception of Lisa Clark. She is excused from this meeting due to a family matter, so she will not be joining us this evening. And the board did meet an executive session prior to this evening's meeting for 15 minutes to discuss two personnel matters. At this point, we will move on to citizens' comments to the board on agenda items. John, do we have any comments to the board on agenda items this evening?
None at this point, Jordan. We do not. But for those of you watching at home, if you would like to provide a comment to the school board, please visit our website at www.lasd.us. Click on the Survey Monkey link, enter your name, address, and the comment you would like to make, and it'll be read to the board at the end of the meeting.
Thank you, John. We'll move on to the next section, Board Representatives Comments. Ms. Reber, I'll start with you.
All right. Thank you. Um, so first of all, we, of course, started back to in-person learning this week. And I have to say, it went so smoothly. Our staff, our students, they just did a phenomenal job of acclimating back. Remember, for the high school, we actually have been on remote since the Friday, the, yeah, before Thanksgiving break. So the last we were in person and before coming back this week was the Friday before Thanksgiving break. So that was a long time for our kids that they were away. Little problem getting adjusted back to the, the earlier start of some kids that were used to sleeping in just a little bit longer. But, you know, that we're happy to be back. We made some changes to make even more social distancing and spacing available in the cafeteria. They handled that with such ease and, you know, absolutely not a complaint from anybody. They are being fantastic with their mask wearing. And I think I had a conversation with one student the first day that was very, very apprehensive about coming back. You know, I had talked with she and her mom and Dr. Pollenschalk had as well, and Mrs. O'Connor. And so I checked in with her as, as she was heading out and I said, how did today go? And she said, you know, it's, it's all still scary with the virus. But I forgot how safe I feel here until I was back here. I remembered how safe I feel here. And, and I thought that says more than anything. You know, I think everybody was a little apprehensive about coming back or, you know, little like, what will it look like? But, but I think that once you're, you're here, that, you know, just like she said, you forget the efforts that we all go to, to make sure that everybody's safe. So I just want to thank everyone for that. Teachers were getting, you know, kids caught up on some things, moving ahead with the next material. Mr. Krieger, I know, had been waiting to do just this one lesson. He couldn't figure out how to do remotely and, you know, is really happy that he got it in. And it was just great to go around the classrooms this weekend and see kids in them. I decided I could never, ever be a cyber school principal. That's, that is definitely not in my wheelhouse. I am meant to be, you know, in a, in a district or in a building where, where there are kids in it. So that, that was good, good for my soul, too. And also, I just want to say, this has been a super busy time for our counselors because in addition to first semester finishing up and getting ready to send kids transcripts, transcripts and things to colleges, this is also a huge time period for the, the application process. And so in Naviance, the number of kids that we have that have already applied, made their decisions or else have a certificate at SUN, we've never had as high of a number of students actually to the point, you know, where, where they have a plan of what they want to do by this time of the year. But that's, it's, and have applied early decision and things. Usually our January 15th window is the largest, but we have already have so many kids that have, have submitted their applications. Several kids that are already hearing back. And for each one of those, Mrs. O'Connor, you know, has half the alphabet. Mrs. Fennel has the other half. There are certain things that they have to collect, that they have to send. They have their own letter of recommendations that they do for each of the students. And, you know, you want very much for it to be individualized, to highlight that students' individual strengths and passions and unique skills and traits. And so when you take that, you know, that number of kids times the time of year, times everything that's, that's happening, you know, with doing our cyber school and enrolling the kids in classes there as well. It's just been an extremely busy, busy time for them, but one that's very satisfying when you see our seniors going and, and ready to, to make their next step. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Wetzel.
Thank you. As Paula said, it's just phenomenal, just to have the kids back in the building. I think there's like a new sense of energy, a new feeling. Everybody's just feeding off of each other. So it's, it's been a great week so far, having, having them all back with us. And jumping right back in, as the students are back in, we're, we're actually tomorrow, we have 13 students participating in District Band. To qualify for that, they did a video submission process earlier in the year. And then tomorrow, they will be in our auditorium zooming with participants from other schools within District Eight. So it's a virtual District Band, which will be a new and exciting experience for those kids. But it's nice that they still get to continue showcasing their talents, showcasing their abilities, learning from guest conductors, pushing themselves with challenging pieces that they need to learn. And they continue then to be able to audition for the next round of, of band. And then also, it's been busy as well, getting back into athletics. And like Ms. Reber said, the, the amount of changes and things that were put in place just to welcome the students back for school. There have also been just, there's been an incredible amount of work being done by so many people to ensure on the health and safety of our student athletes, the coaches, and then the fans that are able to attend, just that they can enjoy the contest and not have to worry about their health and safety. So we've had several home events that we've been able to host, and the people have done a great job there. And it's just great to see, although different with, with the masks and everything and the social distancing and very limited attendance, it's great to be able to see our students have that avenue and for them to be able to still compete in, in those things that they really hold dear and, and look forward to. And then I will pass it on to Mr. Drosen.
Thank you, Mr. Wetzel. Yeah, echoing those sentiments about the, the kids being back in the building. And it certainly changed for them. It's certainly a change for our staff members and greeting kids in the morning on Monday and saying goodbye to them in the afternoon. It was hard to tell if they were more tired coming in or going out on that first couple of days. But they seem to be hitting their stride now, and, and it is an adjustment, an endurance adjustment as well. These are long days for the kids, long days for the teachers, and, and they're making the adjustment very, very nicely. We are approaching the end of the first mark or second marking period, sorry, first semester. And so there's a little bit of extra going on behind the scenes with the counselors and with, and with our teachers to make sure grades are, are going to be up to date and ready to go when report cards are ready to be published. And at that, to that same point, we have e-school students which, who will be finishing their Part Two of their classes. And we have invited a number of kids in to work in our library. So, and with support so that those that who are struggling to have a consistent work environment at home have a consistent place here in the building, they can maintain the social distancing and still try to regain, regain some of the ground they may have lost over the holidays or, or through the first part of the semester. And we're grateful to be able to, to bring them in to do that. Thank you to Mrs. Berg, retired teacher, who helped organize another round of snack packs with the PSA. The snack packs, about 100 of them were distributed today, handed out to our kids to take with them. We really appreciate all of Mrs. Berg's work with those. I know Mrs. Ulrich is organizing for us to participate, for the staff to participate in the United Way Kindness Campaign 2021 in February. So it's just in the beginning stages of that, but she announced to me today that she wanted to do that. So I'm bringing it forward to you, let you know that we're going to do that. I'll have an update for you at the next board meeting. And one other thank you to Mrs. Gogler, our yearbook advisor, who it's difficult to put a yearbook together in a year when almost a third of the time kids have been home learning rather than here at school. We're not able to do the same number of clubs and activities, which are always a focal point of the, you know, just the social life inside the building. And so she's coming up with creative ways to add to the yearbook, like what does your home learning environment look like? And kids are submitting pictures. She had a, a virtual Halloween costume contest and is also asking kids for pictures of creative mask designs that they might be wearing when they need to mask up to go out in public. So she's coming up with creative ideas to, to make a really interesting and unique yearbook this year. So that's what's going on at the middle school right now, and I will turn it over to Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Drosen. I echo the sentiments in terms of students back in the building. It's been a real joy to watch the kids get off the bus and fill the hallways again and be moving around to their different specials and classes and things of that nature. I've had them down by small group to the nurse's office for their height and weight exams and eye exams and things like that that were able to fit in and the state still requires. And so there's just a different energy in the building. The teachers are out in the hallways in the morning, talking to each other and to the kids and greeting them. And it's just, it's the feeling of how things should be, which is a welcome, a welcome change. Just wanted to mention yesterday, and this is something Mrs. Moser may share with you as well, but we had a opportunity to do a Zoom meeting with a trainer from Bridges Math. We're looking at updating our math curriculum three, four, five, and potentially now even K to five. And so she was able to meet with our three, four, five teachers and give a Zoom overview of that program, which was very helpful. That's one of one or two programs under consideration, hopefully for next year. And then two things I wanted to mention related to Green Dragon, the first of which, they were very generous as always and helped us at Lindtown with the purchase of an additional 15 Okio Cam document cameras for our teachers. Our teachers have older document cameras in the classrooms that are hardwired into their short throw projectors to the smart boards in their classrooms. These document cameras are extremely small, extremely portable and lightweight, and they're able to plug directly into their laptops. And so when we transitioned to remote, they were able to take that piece of hardware with them and be able to display. It can be turned up and used as a webcam, an additional webcam to their laptops or pointed down like a normal document camera to display teachers modeling work or, or all different kinds of things. And so Green Dragon stepped in and okayed that for us, and we had them within about a week, which was excellent. And I've had multiple teachers stop by and say how excited they were to have that tool and how easy they are to use. So big thanks to Green Dragon for that. The second thing is tomorrow morning, Dr. Pollenschalk and I meet with Ann Glock and Green Dragon to accept a donation from the Sunrise Rotary Club of 150 copies of the U.S. Constitution, which they've decided to donate to, to Lindtown. And so we'll take a look at the best possible way to use that in our social studies courses or even perhaps sharing some with Mr. Drosen at the middle school. I know they cover some of those U.S. government topics over there as well. But just wanted to say thank you to Green Dragon for both of those things. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Rule.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Good evening, board members. I think the other principals touched on how great it is to have the kids back in the building. I know our, our teachers, while, while we were out remote, we're looking forward to have the, having the kids back and certainly thinking about the challenges of teaching remotely, especially for our youngest learners, when we know that in-person learning is really what's best for them. But over the last few days, as I've been out at recess and, and around the building, we also need to remember the importance of the, the socialization aspect of things for our kids. And I think today out at recess was, was, was really powerful to me, just the joy that the kids had playing together. And when that, when the, the whistle blew for the kids to line up, there was like a collective groan of like, oh, recess is over. You know, they're having so much fun interacting with each other. And, you know, many of them still, when they're at home, have very limited access of who to play with and interact with. And again, just, it's important for us to remember that socialization side of things and just how important that is for our children. Our teachers are working very hard to reteach routines to the students and really to prepare for parent conferences next week. We look forward to the chance to be able to, to meet virtually with parents and share how their students are doing and, and, and answer questions for them. We're also working, starting to get ready for report cards and finalizing assessment pieces. Again, much of the assessments that we need to do at the elementary level are, really need to be face-to-face assessments with the kids. And so the chance to be able to finish those up before the end of the second marking period is critical. So we'll be working very hard in those directions. You know, looking ahead, there's a lot we've had to, to change and modify, whether it's because we were remote or, you know, COVID concerns that we would have. But, you know, I just want to thank our, our teachers, our PSA for thinking creatively about how can we continue to try to offer some of the wonderful activities and, and events that we've had in the past and keep those going this year. So we weren't able to do the, the annual midnight maze in December that, you know, our kids really look forward to in our phys ed classes. So our phys ed teachers are, are working towards a March Madness maze. So when we get closer to basketball time in March, we're going to do a version of it. Instead of the usual tag, they're going to use those flexible noodles that they use to be able to tag kids to help keep social distance and those kinds of things. But the kids are going to have a great time and really enjoy that. And our PSA, you know, in, in trying to think about the best way to do the Dragon Dash, we're going to move that to, I believe, in June, and we'll do it outside. So rather than, than running inside, we'll, we'll host it outside. And same thing, working with our phys ed teachers around some ideas for, for Field Day this year, while it may not include exactly the same number of activities or mixing, mixing of groups or outside volunteers. They've got some really great ideas of how we can make a Field Day work for our kids this year. And again, that would take place in June as the school year continues on. So just a lot of thanks to all of the people that are supporting our kids and their creativity in trying to make this year a positive one for them. So thank you very much. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Fetzer or Dr. Pollenschalk.
Thanks, everyone, for the updates. It's always so good to hear those, and it's exciting that the kids are back in the buildings and to hear of all the things going on. We'll move on to the select presentations portion of our agenda. Dr. Pollenschalk, I'll turn it over to you for the 2020-21 Student Achievement Data Presentation.
Should I mute myself first? No, Mr. Fair, or Dr. Fairchild is going to be running through the slides for us. I just want to let everybody know, there are a number of slides on this PowerPoint. We are not going to go through all of the slides. There's an appendix that has the specific data that I'm referencing in the presentation that certainly board directors and anybody in the public can look to review. And of course, if there are any questions, to feel free to ask me. If we can advance one, John? Thank you. Okay, so what this report will include is a little bit about what the PA Future Ready Index is. Since the PSSAs and Keystone Exams were not administered last spring, we do not have new data. But this was a good opportunity for me. Now, while, you know, of course, there is data that's out there publicly, then there's the data that we're able to access as school administrators and teachers to really drill down to see exactly how students are doing in a more granular way. So this was a good opportunity for me to do that and to do some assessment and also help us start to set some direction in where we're going to focus on curriculum and instruction. So I will present those trends. We did have AP exams last year, and they were modified to some degree. And we did have SAT. Unfortunately, we did not have enough students taking the ACT in order to get any results for that. We needed a certain population for them to, to publish results for us. John, if you can, thank you. Okay, first, we'll start off with the Future Ready Index. So what is this? So in, since the PSSAs began, and we're going to go all the way back to 2002, almost these tests have been around for a while, there have been iterations and improvements. And the goal of this is really to get all students to be proficient in reading, math, and science. But along the way, they realize it's not just proficiency, it's important that students are growing because we want to make sure that the students that are proficient continue to make one year's progress. And then we come up to what was just put into place about two, three years ago, which is the Future Ready Index. This is where we're basically taking the temperature of a school and determining what its health is. We're looking at the overall proficiency of the students and students that are advanced proficient. We're looking at their growth. We're looking at other measures that speak to a school's success, which, which would include attendance, our English, English language learner's proficiency as they're learning their content. They're also learning English. And certain indicators, reading on grade level by grade three, and certainly math proficiency in grade four. So all of this is really measuring where the school district is going with the federal guidelines of reaching these thresholds of proficiency by 2030. So it's almost like playing a golf game. You're always trying to beat your own score next year. It's not so much a comparison of school district to school district or even school district to state. We want to look to see that we're growing and we're improving each year. John? Okay. We also look at college and career measures, and that's important, too. That's been recent in making sure that our programs include opportunities for students to learn about and contemplate careers that they may want to go into and to start to make plans for that. And that's a K to 12 process. We look at our graduation rate. We do also take into consideration how our students perform at SUN Tech on exams such as the NAPT and other industry-based exams that they would need to pass in order to, to get certification. We also look at rigorous courses. We want students to take the most rigorous courses that they can. So we're awarded a certain number of points for students who do elect to take AP classes and of course, post-secondary transition. What do students do after graduation? Do they enter the workforce, military, go on to college? So our job isn't just to educate them K-12, it's to really make sure that they also have a plan and the skills that they need to be successful after graduation. This score, which is given to us each year by the Department of Education, is actually factored into teacher and administrators' rating forms. So it's called the ACT 82 Building Level Performance Profile Score. And that score is calculated into that. So in terms of teacher performance as defined by the Department of Education, it very much takes into account how the schools are doing. Okay, so this is looking back where we've been over the past couple of years. Of course, this indicator did not come out last year. There were some assessments administered, such as the WIDA Assessment for Language Proficiency for our English language learners. That's typically administered January into February. So those scores did come back and, but nothing that would have changed the overall profile score. And there's a color-coded system. If you're dark blue, this means that you have made well beyond one year's growth. If you're light blue, somewhere beyond that. Green is you're just right where you need to be. Yellow is that you're, some of your students have not made a year's growth. And red is significant, that there is no growth. And you can see going across here, and they have recalculated this as they're refining it over the past couple of years, but lining up where our scores were along with those indicators. And generally speaking, we're pretty much, our kids are making the growth that they need to make at very high levels of proficiency. John? Okay. So I looked at where we had our last ACT 82 Building Level Performance Profile and looked at each of the measures. And, and these hyperlinks will take you to the public face of what's reported that any community member can look at to see how the school is doing. And that's all those factors, such as attendance, graduation rate, proficiency rates, growth rates. And everything was met. The high schools certainly will want to take a look at where we are with English Language Arts and Literature and Science and Biology growth. There, there was a slight decline there. I'll speak about that a little bit more when we look at the data K-12 to see where we are. Okay. P-Boss growth. So this is an important, and one could argue probably the more important indicator of how a school district is doing, because with this, we're again looking at our students making one year's growth. So even the most advanced and talented students still should be one year ahead at the end of that grade level that they complete in that subject area. You have the same color-coded systems. And what we have here first is English Language Arts and how our schools performed. The, there's two measures. There's how the students did in 2019, but then a three-year rolling average. And what we can see is we begin to see some blips. There's some areas where we're doing very well. For example, at the middle school, there seems to be a drop-off of kids being well above making more than a year's growth, but then suddenly really slip in sixth grade and that they catch back up in seventh and eighth grade. What that tells us is that's a place to take a look at that transition. With English Language Arts, one of the things we typically find is that there isn't enough emphasis on reading and analyzing nonfiction texts. We've typically relied on a lot of fiction text. So making sure that that's available in the curriculum and that teachers are familiar with how to be able to teach those skills within nonfiction is, is a place where we can emphasize some professional development. We can also see if we go to Lindtown Elementary School and, I'm sorry, I'm putting my glasses on here so I could see it a little bit better. But we can see that, again, there's a bit of a dip that occurs there in grade four specifically. When we look at the three-year average, where they made it in 2019, there's a bit of a dip there. So, um, these are, this is in science. So this makes us take a look at, well, what's our science curriculum, not just in fourth grade, but what does it look like K to four? While the tests occur in just fourth and eighth grade for PSSA science, we have to remember that kids will be presented with content and skills that they need to master the grade level before in order to be successful. Okay? Okay. So what's it really revealing for us? So we see that drop, as I've said. So we look first to, is our curriculum aligned? Is the instruction aligned to the types of tasks that the students would need to do on the assessment? And then from there, how do we deliver professional development to make sure teachers are comfortable with that? Overall, we've seen that in, in science, K to 12, we have some areas where we need to be better aligned to the standards. to the standards. Pennsylvania is moving towards the next generation standard. So that's something that teachers need to be familiar with. And we just look at our materials and resources to make sure that that alignment's occurring. Middle school math has been consistently strong. Middle school also suffers the phenomenon of many students taking the Algebra I Keystone exam the same year they're taking PSSAs. So they need to take both in eighth grade and oftentimes, we do see a bit of a dip in the PSSAs as they're emphasizing on simply algebra instead of those other anchor areas. So you know, those are some things to, that's actually a point of kind of good pride that our kids really don't fall off as we would see in some other districts where they're just really focusing on algebra. And our high school curriculum and very similar to sixth grade, just making sure we're aligned to the standards and that the students are presented with more nonfiction texts that they can analyze. We continue on here. Our PSA Scores and Trends. Now, in the appendix, there are a number of charts taking each grade and looking at the scores from 2015 to 2015 to 2019 and the trend line. So welcome to to look at those and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Across the board, it's important to say that we are well above the state average in proficiency and advanced proficiency and combined. So our students do very well on the assessments. But even though they do well, there are some areas where they could do better. And some of the places we look first is again, the curriculum to make sure it's aligned. It, it's a different situation than in a school district where you might have very low proficiency and you're looking to focus really on remediation. Our focus should be more on some of the enrichment for the individual students and groups of students who have demonstrated proficiency, but there's still some areas where there's a little bit of weakness and they certainly can grow in those areas. Okay, John? Okay, so our trends. I'm not going to read these, but the trend lines will show that we, in some areas, our advanced proficient scores are declining, our proficient scores are either growing because the students are slipping from advanced proficient to proficient, or both are declining. And we see this across the board and there isn't necessarily a pattern that there's one particular grade level that is having any more issues than the other. It's not a surprise that you start to see a dip when you're in transition years. So our transition from Lindtown to the middle school, this could also be resolved with some articulation between the teachers, conversations about how the instructions happening, the resources that they're using, always of course, being a lot more converse conversant with the standards. And you know, the, the charts will kind of bear that out for us. What we really want to see is, you know, maintaining the level of proficiency we have, but we really want to avoid seeing kids slip from advanced proficient or even from proficient to basic. That, you know, does create some problems in terms of how scores are used and calculated and we do need to pay attention to that. But that could also suggest that our kids maybe aren't feeling as challenged or as engaged as well. So there are, there are a lot of other things to explore. Certainly with talking with teachers and students, we would get a better idea of what those things are. Can never really point to just one thing the scores will tell us, but the patterns point us in a direction of where to look for our continuous improvement. Okay? Um, science, even though there are some areas where students do not perform as well, we've, we've really stayed with very high advanced proficient scores in grades four and eight. But again, that doesn't mean that there isn't areas to take a look at some more emphasis on certain topics within the science curricula. And our trend lines, you know, looking at third grade, the kids are doing better from 15, 2015 to 2019. And again, in eighth grade, in math, certainly in sixth grade, but then we do see some slips in these other grades if we look at it across the board from the 2015 score to the 2018 score. Okay? So analysis of some growth areas, what we, what we did was when we get the score, the results themselves, we certainly get their scaled score, if they're advanced proficient, proficient, basic, low basic. But we can also go in and see which, not the questions themselves, but how the students performed on anchors. So there will be an array of questions that are related to a particular anchor area. And we can drill into that data to see, well, where does it look like a pattern that overwhelmingly kids really got a lot of these questions incorrect? So in elementary and English Language Arts, vocabulary acquisition and use. So students certainly can benefit from additional instruction with vocabulary and also you know, it comes down to even suffixes and prefixes and some other things like that that maybe aren't as much an emphasis as they could be. Writing craft and structure. So if we think about writing crafts, we're talking about how authors use style, their word choice, variety of sentences and structure. This can all fall back down into the conventions of of English grammar. Always areas where students, you know, can certainly benefit from some additional instruction. Text-dependent analysis, this is going to be a theme across all of the grades. And this is really truly a struggle across the board in the state as well. When students can certainly find main ideas in the supporting details, but they sometimes do struggle to, if they have an interpretation of a text, to be able to go back and find exactly where in the text they would have derived that idea. So it's basically you think something, you know, something will justify and point at what it is in the text that tells you that that's the correct answer. And that's a pretty advanced skill and we are asking kids to do that as young as third grade. It looks different, of course, by the time they're taking the literature Keystone, but it's definitely an area that we've been working towards. And if we would have had the test last year, we might have seen a different pattern emerging. In math, measurement, place value, operations, the four operations, adding, subtracting, multiplying, dividing, and geometry. We'll see geometry pop up a couple of times. Number sense is something that's, that's very important for kids to have a strong understanding of because that will also be something that helps them cross-check is their answer, does it even make sense in the realm of math and a way for them to be able to go back and if they're making a guess, how do you make an estimated guess? A good educated guess if you're doing that. Science, we're seeing, and again, there's going to be a pattern that emerges here too. Ecology, form sources and conservation of energy and structure of the universe. We do see physical science topics coming up and we do see earth and space science coming up multiple times as we're looking at this again in eighth grade. And then biology, of course, is just going to look at biology. Okay? And so, you know, again, we're seeing some of those same concepts emerge. Math, real-world applications of math. We want kids to be able to do math, but we also want them to understand that math helps you solve and explain a problem or a phenomenon. And we use math all the time without really thinking about it, or at least mathematical thinking to approach a problem-solving task. And that's something that those real-world type of examples and that would benefit students to have some more instruction and practice with that. And it's also practical for them to have that comparative inferences with data. So analyzing data is an area of growth. And again, these are, you know, if we're talking about sixth, eighth grade, these are, these are not easy concepts per se. And again, kids do well, but you know, we can definitely emphasize on this. And we see some of the patterns coming back, you know, just with different specific content in science. So you know, certainly focusing on biology, but we do need to make sure that we're expanding outside of that into ecology and covering the physical science that they need as well as the earth and space. And the Keystone Exam Score Trends. So everything K to eight leads to what the students will be doing when they're taking those Keystone exams. While there's a waiver for last year and may very well be one for this year, starting in 2022, and they'll have to yet revise when these deadlines are, there's five pathways to graduation and one of them is demonstrating proficiency on these exams. There are other pathways as well too. So it is something that we can't ignore, but you know, we do use this to inform what our program is. Nonfiction coming back up again, as we've mentioned, linear equations, algebra is a little bit tricky because we have students who take it you know, at least between two or three and maybe even four grade spans depending upon when they're ready for algebra. So the pattern emerges that linear equations are an area of emphasis, but that's more likely with some of our students who have, they're delayed taking the algebra and Keystone or they've retaken it because they were not proficient the first time. Biology, biological principles and bio and genetics. So those are some areas that, you know, we certainly can take a look at our curriculum and make sure that there's alignment, not just in the biology class, but again, all the sciences leading up to that biology Keystone that would touch upon that. AP exams. So we have in this chart here, we have the number of students with a score of three or above. So these are just the raw numbers here. And the total number of the exams taken, keeping in mind that many students take more than one AP exam because they may be in more than one course. We do have where students are taking the AP courses, but they're not necessarily sitting for the exams. And we really want to encourage them to do that because if they score a three or above, many colleges will accept that as credit and this gives them room in their schedules for major, another major if they switch or picking up a minor or simply graduating early and saving some money. So it's definitely something that we want to encourage and look for ways to be able to incentivize kids to take the most rigorous courses, but get everything they can out of them. And our total number of AP students are right below that. So that's why your black line here is less than your green line because one student may have taken two or three or four classes that are AP classes. Participation rate isn't, isn't terrible and the number of kids certainly scoring a three or above, that these are very respectable scores. Certain AP exams are harder than other AP exams as well too, just because of the nature of the content. And we have one more, SAT and ACT. So for the SATs, looking back, and again, this is looking over the course of a year when the administrations would occur. Keeping in mind that many SAT administrations were canceled because of the pandemic, so students may have not had the opportunity to better their scores and you know, hopefully do plan to do so. We also have to keep in mind with the SAT that colleges are starting to look at a student profile for admission differently than just relying solely on an SAT cut score. So how a student, how many students take it, how they perform, those things will start to emerge as, you know, just what the purpose of the SAT is and whether it's an attractive test for a student also evolves. But generally speaking, we're again above the, the national norms and that's, you know, definitely something to be proud of across the board. ACT, as I shared, this is whatever might have been presented last year, the data, just maybe in a different graph. Our kids do very well on it when they take it. But we did not have a, a population enough to get a report for this past year, 2020. And there's the appendix. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Jen. I, I really appreciate all the data. I have a couple of questions. One, I wish I had noticed this earlier, but what we might need is the percent of tests taken that were AP tests taken that were three or greater. Right? Because we would hope to beat 60% on that because that's the national norm. But we just have the students and some students might have taken three tests and gotten three fives. And you know, just to right, not by student, but by actual test taken. And then the other thing I was wondering is we used to get a data report that had a little bit more division of the data by type of student. So we would see English Language Learners, how are they doing? Or some, some other classifications like, like free and reduced lunch children or something like that. And that would help us know which kids might need more supports or where we might need to focus our efforts if we have limited resources. So I'm wondering if that's something that maybe is a follow-up and maybe we can't do it because we don't have data from last year, but something to revisit if we can get data for this year.
It definitely because the English Language Learners took the WEATA exam. In some cases, we don't have sufficient population in a school for them to report that. So that would require us to just go in and and basically pull those kids out and do it by hand. And Ms. Moser and I did speak about that to do that as a follow-up report that just really dives into the disaggregated data, which will be important when we really start to look at where our Equity Committee for the District and our Comprehensive Planning for the State and Strategic Planning all aligns. While there isn't a large population, there definitely is a population and those are students that require different level of attention and instruction than some of our other students. And many of them take multiple boxes as well. So you know, just seeing, you know, which, you know, what those patterns are. Is it students that are all the historically underperforming is, is the category probably familiar with where it's a catch-all for students that have a low SES, special education needs and might be English Language Learners and they're all together. So it's pulling that data apart because I think that's what's more valuable, not just one category, but really understanding the profile of each of those students. So we will be following up with that.
Thanks. And then Jeremiah earlier mentioned that they were looking at a new math curriculum and sequencing three to five, possibly K to five. Is that to address some of the issues that you're seeing for alignment with the tests?
Yes, that, that was work that was certainly underway with Ms. Moser and I invite her to jump in and, you know, just give a little bit more information on the math pilot. We're piloting to, we're certainly looking very closely what's aligned to the standards. And also has one of the struggles you have with the math series is you typically have more chapters than you have ever time to cover. So looking at how a series is also laid out to make sure that the kids get the instruction and those topics that they need that year. So Ms. Moser, if you
I will. Thank you. I appreciate that Dr. Paul and Chalk referenced this as an already ongoing piece of work before we all went home in March and, and things like this had to stop last, last spring. But our own good math teachers sitting and reviewing data absolutely identify some of the very areas that are, are being shown tonight and, and spoken about in the data report. They felt our students were lacking number sense. They felt our students were struggling to solve multi-step word problems. And there was concern for fact fluency. So in taking the opportunity to look at our text series and again, provide our teachers with best resources, we focused on our three self-identified areas of need and, and went looking for curriculum materials that would support effort in those areas. And that's what's led us so far and we resumed our process here in the last several weeks as we've come back into instruction and been able to put time and effort and energies to that. And that's one of the strengths in the series that we've been looking at. And I would say we've also relied upon some expertise from Bucknell Math Education Department and Dr. Dick weighed in and, and attended one of our sessions and we were pleased to have her input. And she actually endorses one of the series that we've been looking at as well. So yes, there is some real thoughtful analysis, some ongoing effort to look and we want to bring forward that process to adoption here yet this year for implementation next year. At one point, we talked about a two-year implementation. We are certainly better served if we have the cohesive K to five adoption in place for this next school year.
I had a question about the, the literature challenges at the high school level and really all the way up to that point. Is there, I assume this already happens, but is there an effort to address to find opportunities to teach kids how to read nonfiction and do that kind of text-dependent analysis outside of the Language Arts classes? It seems to me that in the social studies and sciences, there are some great opportunities to be presenting kids with you know, really interesting nonfiction that reinforces the scientific concepts, but that, but that the teaching them how to do that but that the teaching them how to do that kind of reading doesn't need to happen only in language arts classes.
Right, very much so. And in sharing this, this morning with the administrative team and before the board meeting tonight, that was something that we spoke about that you, you want to make sure the kids are also analyzing nonfiction texts where it's natural for them to do it within the context of that subject area. And English and literature is a subject on to its own. It's not just about reading. We think about reading, language arts in elementary and up through middle school, but there comes a point where you're just now studying literature. And that would be the different genre of literature, the different literary elements that are used. Certainly analyzing written analysis of literature is different than the type of writing kids would do in science or they would do in social studies. So they do need the basics, but then they do need to know that when I'm in social studies, I'm writing it like this, I'm analyzing a, a primary text a certain way that's going to be different than how I might analyze a play or a poem. And all that has to be done within that context. So it's, it's not just to rest solely on the, the English department. Certainly there's excellent narrative nonfiction that would be very appropriate to add, but to be able to have reading that kids can do outside of their textbook that is connected to the content area. So kids can see that application is really important. And I think that would increase the engagement as well too.
If I can just jump in there too, Virginia, I very much agree with everything that Jen and Kathy just said. And I'm a, a big proponent, but I think we need to have a more consistent approach. And also some staff development at the secondary level and that is, is very important. We've had a big turnover in some of our staff the last couple of years. I know a few years ago, many, more than a few years ago, back when I first started at Lindtown, the IU had done a specific reading in the content areas. I know at that same time, we had put some, some things in it at Lindtown at the, as well. Like Cristovani is, you know, I read it, but I just don't get it. And, and some of those things that really addresses, you know, how you go about reading that. And I think we see it. I think some of our upper level sciences where, you know, it becomes a little bit more like when I'm thinking of, you know, AP government or something like that, you see a lot more of that. But I, I think that we need more of that in particular, maybe in like the ninth and the 10th grade year. You know, before AP and, and things like that, because of, there is a very set curriculum with AP that does include some of that. But I know that sometimes that's where sometimes teachers get a little stressed with how you balance that AP curriculum and, and everything else. But that absolutely is, is an area that, that we can do and naturally that you can bring that into. So I, I think it's just a matter of some staff development and things on that and finding the, the examples and samples of types of resources that teachers can use.
Thank you, Paula. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right. And for, as always, if you guys have any other additional questions as we continue to review those slides, certainly reach out. Thank you for that presentation. We'll move on to our board action section this evening. Under old business, Dr. Fairchild, turn it over to you for the Kelly electricity contract.
Yes. At our last board meeting back in December, the board authorized us to go out and get some new electricity and natural gas contracts as our old ones are about to wrap up here in the near future. So we would ask that you first approve the three-year electricity contract for Kelly Elementary with direct energy at 6.24 cents per kilowatt hour, please.
So moved.
Second.
John, what's the reason to not go for the 40-year? Oh, that's a little more expensive. Never mind, never mind.
Trying to save money here.
I missed a decimal, please.
Yep.
All right. So that was moved. Sorry, I missed the motion second. Dr. Zimmerman, I believe, followed by Ms. Stanton, if I'm not mistaken. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please. Paula.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe? Mr. Rowe? Mr. Rowe? Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Braus?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Seems like we're having some difficulties hearing Mr. Rowe. So we will move on to the next item. And include him in the next vote. We'll see if we can straighten out that technical issue. Dr. Fairchild, back to you for the natural gas contract.
Yes, we were able to lock in a natural gas contract with direct energy for the high school for four years at $3.13 per MMBTU, which represents a decrease of 8.7 cents per MMBTU for savings of approximately $737 a year. So so we would ask that you approve this contract this evening and it'll be locked in and will be good for four years.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Mrs. Braus. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Paula.
Mr. Rowe? Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Braus?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe? Motion carried.
All right. We'll move on to board action under new business. First item, Mrs. Moser, the SAC staff rate of pay.
Thank you. We have been having some ongoing discussions about the SAC rate of pay and the pay differential for some of the individuals who operate our SAC program during the days that we have remote instruction. We're asking tonight, as you can read the, the motion in front of you, to allow the district to move forward with paying our SAC employees either their hourly rate of pay as our instructional aides, as many of them are, or their SAC rate, which is, whichever is the higher per employee, as you can read here, merely for the time that they're working in the SAC program during the remote instruction. And we want the authorization to be able to work with their rate of pay.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please. Paula.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Braus?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe? Motion carried.
I did get a message from Mr. Rowe. He's trying to reconnect. He can hear us, but we're having difficulty hearing him. So that's, that's the issue right now. So we'll hope that he can rejoin us. Moving on, Dr. Fairchild, to one of our favorite topics, the van replacement proposal.
It is, it is that time, the final Dodge caravan that has been in our fleet since 2006. Van number four has failed to pass inspection. So this is the last of the era. And so we're bringing forward to you tonight a quote from a Co-Stars quote from our friends at Sunbury Motors to trade in the Dodge caravan that won't pass inspection as well as the 2001 GMC cargo van that doesn't, I, I found out later after I wrote this, I found that it doesn't actually run and there are no brakes. So it kind of needs to go away. And those will be traded in for a small value towards the cost of the van. So we would ask that you approve this quote and we will get a new van up and running in our fleet to help transport our students around to where they need to be.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mrs. Braus, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. We'll try to limit discussion for under an hour for this, but any discussion?
What color is it?
Between automatic doors.
That seemed to be a hot topic for the board. So and Dr. Fairchild did, did tell me that this one will have a backup camera. So he allayed my fears there, my concerns. So that was something that we had discussed several years ago, just obviously a safety, a safety feature. So any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please. Paula.
Your Unziger Fisero?
Yes, just for Jordan.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Braus?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe? Mr. Rowe? Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Our next item, Dr. Pollenchuck for the PDE guidelines attestation.
So with the November 23rd revised guidelines that came out from the Department of Education, if a school district that was in a substantial county remained open, then they needed to sign this attestation. I would need to sign it and Mr. Fetzer would have to sign it. It was due back to PDE by the 30th of November. Council has advised us to bring it to the board for approval, but within the guidelines itself, it didn't dictate that the school board would have to approve it. The guidelines simply say that if we are in substantial and schools are open, one, we will enforce masks with anybody within the schools, which we do. And second, that we would follow the guidelines for school closures, which is taking to a certain number of cases amongst students and staff within a school that they would go to a mandatory closure for a period of time for additional cleaning and contact tracing. So we do have that signed and this is coming forward to the boards. The board may vote on it. And if affirmatively voted upon, then this would just be posted on our website. And all school districts in the state have, in the Commonwealth have completed the attestation.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Sorry. Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Mrs. Braus. Any discussion?
I wonder if just for the, for the knowledge of the public and maybe people who don't read their emails, because this will be recorded. If you just tell folks the number of cases we're talking about for each building that would result in the closure.
Okay. So I will pull that up if you give me just one second here. So it depends upon the size of the school. So two of our schools are considered small schools and two are considered medium. The middle school and Lindtown are considered small and Kelly and the high school are considered large. So I am pulling that up right now. So for a small school, we would, just make sure I'm reading the correct part of it. Yes. A small school in substantial, we, if we get to between two to four students or staff in the same building, what other districts have done when they've come upon this is they're consulting with the Department of Health because there are factors as to whether or not the students reside in the same household or had some contact outside of school that might be the cause of that. But essentially they'll say you need to close down. And then with their consultation, they tell you when you can open back up. And the days that can be closed can also be over the weekend. So typically, again, three to seven days. And this is so that there's an opportunity for the contact tracing and additional cleaning. Where a medium school, which would be the high school in Kelly, we're looking at four to six students within the building where we would have to close.
We had to sign this for Sun Tech too, and Jen's been able to just shut down programs because they're all isolated in one, one area. However, we had several programs out same time. We did have virtual learning last week.
And that's an example, I think, of how the Department of Health will work with tech schools. And I know Jen's been very just very much on top of not just letting us know what's going on with the students, but really just double checking to make sure that plan would be acceptable by the Department of Health and they did agree.
And that's four to six students and/or staff, right, at Kelly and the high school, just for clarification.
Right. So it's within a 14-day period of time. So if we have, we, we certainly do have individuals who have contracted COVID-19 over the holidays, but they were not in the buildings. So if a student or staff member were in the building, going back 14 days, which would take us to looking for tomorrow, it would be December 31st. Anybody that would have been in the building in that period of time, we count them in that window. Once a school is closed, you then reset your bill, your numbers. One thing that many school districts are doing is if they're approaching a number, they're starting to see a pattern emerge, they close preemptively and just control when they would go remote. Because the goal is to have schools open, but it's not to have schools open so that COVID is transmitted all over the place. It's not, we haven't had a case of direct transmission within the school. There have been cases where individuals have been participating in extracurricular activities and, and that's where the transmission has occurred. But it, it's reasonable to understand that while they're in that incubation period and maybe contagious that they, you know, may have interacted with a student or a staff member. Thus far, it hasn't resulted in a positive case. And we have to keep in mind that everybody's wearing their masks, we're social distancing as much as possible. Mr. Glay goes, let us know today that we have a meeting being set up with McClure to see how our bipolar ionization is working as they've taken the second set of samples. So these are, and the materials now, the, the solution that we use in the MISTERS was just recently approved by the EPA as a one-minute kill solution. So we, we have, we have a lot of tools in our arsenal so that if somebody does have it or they could possibly transmit it, even if they're asymptomatic and they don't know, those mitigation strategies in place really reduce the chances of that occurring.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. We'll do a roll call vote for this, please. Paula.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Sorry.
Yes.
Mrs. Braus?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fisero?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Our next item, we'll move on to policies for first reading there in front of you. Dr. Pollenchuck, Dr. Zimmerman, Dr. Jablonsky, anybody want to introduce them?
Actually, Mr. Fetzer, first we have the PSBA model administrative regulations for annual contract.
Thanks. Sorry, I got ahead of myself and crossed it off. So, Dr. Pollenchuck, I'll go back to that item and turn it over to you.
So with part of belonging to board docs, we get the Pennsylvania Policy Network where PSBA develops sample policies that go out to the school districts for their consideration and adoption. They update policies regularly, but in They update policies regularly, but in particular when something has changed with legislation. And the policies that are available to us go back for two years. As we're doing our work with policy, there are some policies that are outdated a little bit beyond that. The PNN plus would give us access to older policies, individual policies that we may want to look at that we know that there has been some legislative change, but our current policies don't reflect that. And also model administrative guidelines, which, you know, are oftentimes the different types of forms or data collection that we need to do in the administration of the policy. This is something that we foresee not needing for a very long time as we're aggressively moving through our policies and we'll be able to then keep up with just the basic package. But it would be helpful to have this for a short period of time, a year to two years, just to get us back on track and then make sure that we also have all the policies as well that we, we should have.
So moved. I'm sorry, where are we? You're voting, right?
Yes, so the, the PSBA model administrative regulations, manual contract. Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Zimmerman, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please Paula.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger for Sarah?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, sorry for throwing us off on that item. We'll now move on to the policies for first reading.
I move that we accept for first reading these policies, which you see here.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Zimmerman, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky, any discussion? All right, we can do this by voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the memorandum of understanding, Dr. Pollenstock.
We are presenting a memorandum of understanding with LAEA. This is in regard to when an individual takes an FMLA leave. That leave occurs in the beginning of their absence, if it's an eligible leave for 12 weeks. In some instances, there are individuals who extend that leave longer. We've found that with many people that are on maternity leave, they want to have some more time with their child. But they move into unpaid days. So what we currently do is if an individual goes out and they have, let's say, 60 days of paid time off, but their leave will be 80 days. What we currently do is recalculate the balance of their salary so that the individual doesn't go without a paycheck when that leave without pay begins. It's a fairer way and this calculation's done and it's reviewed with the employee. One of the things that would occur when we go into unpaid leave is the insurance premium would not be paid for that individual and it could, obviously, a child is covered, it's parent and child insurance. And it's been something that has been a little bit difficult for our folks to understand. Certainly, we have more people right now than we normally do in this situation. And so this memorandum of understanding would state that if somebody does then prorate their salary for the balance of the days that they are going to work, then they would be eligible to have the insurance paid by the district. If they full on go with an unpaid leave, stop or pay, stop receiving a paycheck, then they would be responsible for their insurance premiums. This impacts at least two employees right now. It's not something that we anticipate seeing occur all of the time. Certainly sometimes, especially with, with maternity and then child rearing leave, sometimes these are planned events, sometimes these are not planned events. But what we want to prevent the employee from having to worry about is the loss of insurance and, and/or coming back at an unusual time towards the end of the year that would be disruptive to the students who then have a substitute that's in with them. But for the fact of the insurance, they otherwise wouldn't be returning.
Do I hear? Sorry, I missed, I started talking, sorry about that, I missed, who moved that?
I did, Erin did.
Thanks Erin, so moved by Dr. Jablonsky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Zimmerman, any discussion?
Just to clarify, this, this memorandum of understanding isn't, isn't going to be taking insurance away from somebody right now who thought they were going to have it. Okay.
Any other discussion? I will do this by roll call, please Paula.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger for Sarah?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll move on to the MTS software solutions quote and indemnification and confidentiality agreements, I can't talk now, Dr. Pollenstock.
Okay, we currently have a number of old personnel files for individuals who no longer work for us. We do need to retain those records and particularly with the different checks that we need to do to verify employment and child abuse or any kind of misconduct. We also have a number of student records that we do need to keep for 99 years. And in looking to consolidate storage space as well as to create the digital records that could be easily referenced, we're bringing this forward. Our tech department has moved into the storage closet over here at Lindtown that would have been where that storage was. So these files are currently in the basement. There is a concern about the files becoming damaged in the basement in any way and therefore unusable. So we're bringing this forwards for the board's consideration to move forward with the digitization of the record.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Mrs. Brousse, any discussion?
Why is the special education one so high? Is it just the volume? Is it just the volume of records that go along with that category?
Yes.
It seems like a lot of money, is it, you know, is this something where we would seek out other vendors that might not charge so much, or is this sort of the only way to do this?
This is a vendor that we've used before and the actual indemnification confidentiality agreement was written by our current solicitor. So, go ahead Jen.
I was gonna say, Virginia, if you would like to come to Lindtown, I'd be happy to take you to the basement and you, you will see the boxes upon boxes. This, this price is actually very reasonable, especially on a per page basis for the files there. I've been, there are still a few payroll and accounts payable files. I've been slowly working through scanning them in when I have a moment here or there, but we're, we're talking dozens upon dozens, if not almost, you know, hundreds of boxes of files. So it's actually quite reasonable.
Okay.
It does seem like a lot of money, I agree, but I know that we have the legal requirement. We have to have them in some form, right? And we can't destroy the physical records without having confirmed that we definitely have a secure archival digital, so.
My only concern is just the timing of this, considering, you know, where we're at in the budget and, you know, just the timeliness, I'm not doubting that we need to, to take this action. You know, it just, it seems like a lot of money for, for our current year under the circumstances. So like I said, I'm not doubting that it needs to be done. I'm just not sure this year might be the best year to do it.
I, I can offer that notwithstanding a significant change in the price, if this is something that the board would like to contemplate at a different time when we have a better idea of where our budget will end this year and what we're going to be proposing for next year, that would be fine. It's certainly work that does need to be done. I wouldn't put it off too long, just at the risk of the records being damaged.
Do we have any trouble with water in, in that basement?
Not currently, we do have an older dehumidifier that is down there and it runs 24/7, 365. And I think it's been there quite some time. But in other parts of the Lindtown basement, not where the records are stored, but in other sections of the basement, we do have water running through the boiler room, I believe. So there is always that possibility.
My next question is, is there a chance that this price could increase when we decide to do it, if we don't decide to do it now?
There's always a possibility of price increases in the future, depending on when we, when we take action, so.
Is there money in the budget to do this, John?
We could make this happen, yes, we could make this happen.
It seems to me we ought to do it now rather than wait.
It also says that it's estimated cost, right? So hopefully the actual cost wouldn't go up, but maybe they find records that are beyond the date that are required for archiving, right? Because it's only graduation records that you have to keep for 99 years, but aren't other things able to be disposed of in like just 20 years or something?
Dr. Pollenstock, you're muted, yep.
Oh, I'm sorry to say, personnel records, because of the employment verifications that we have to do, we typically might keep them for at least seven years. But now with the educator misconduct, if someone's seeking employment and they worked for us 20 years ago, we'd have to have access to that. It, it could also be a process of, of looking through what's actually in those personnel files and making sure that we're only digitizing what's absolutely necessary. So, you know, what we know will be asked of is, you know, some things regarding salaries, certainly anything around discipline that might have happened in that category, but letters of commendation and some other things that might just be in the file may not need to be included. And that would be the same for the student records as well, too. If it's possible to pull from Power School, just the, the transcript and one summary page of all the grades that the student received K through 12 as opposed to 12 report cards, as an example, that would, you know, certainly make it easier. But then, you know, again, it's just, John could speak a little bit more to the archiving process. If we can do that, then, you know, those records may not need to be. Special education's a little different because you're capturing signatures and those are multiple page documents.
Yeah. And, and the, the quotes are based on estimates. They didn't go through individual boxes and look at individual files. So it may be that, you know, the box isn't as full as they thought it was or, you know, some, you know, some things weren't necessary. So yeah, there's, there's a possibility it could be less, again, these are just estimates.
I wanted to ask, now that we have DocuSign, moving forward, we will not have the nine-page, you know, special ed thing with mostly instructions and then one signature and we're saving the whole document, right? We're going to be already having it in digital version, archival, so we don't have, we won't be doing this again in five years.
I, while we capture it in DocuSign, and Ms. Moser, you might be able to answer this a little bit better, I think they're still printing out the entire document along with the, the dates and times that stamps for the signature. And some of this is also a function of what the Department of Education expects to see when they come review files and they, they really want, literally want that paper. But the, the question is to, other records, I think we could probably cull that out.
So I would be in favor of approving this now if we do everything we can as a district to make sure that we are starting digital and not generating so much paper with so many analog processes.
What's the process, who, who from the district would be going through to to hand off the documents to the, to this company? Do, I mean, do we have, what's that process look like? Who determines what needs to be scanned and what doesn't need to be scanned as far as dates?
That would be, that more than likely falls down to myself, Kathy and Paula to really take a look at the documents.
So it is being done in-house, they're, the company themselves are not determining what needs to be saved, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, the company only scans what we give them, so.
Okay, that's what I assumed, I just wanted to be sure.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? We do have a motion, a second on the table, so I'll go to a roll call vote, please Paula.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger for Sarah?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, that concludes our board action section for this evening. Mrs. Moser, I'll turn it over to you for the planned instruction under board information.
Thank you, it's an unusual piece to bring you some course instruction, information and curriculum here in, in a January meeting, but Ms. Yankowski has been busy and has done some good revisions of the Spanish 4-5 course. And it runs here in the second semester of our high school year. And so she wanted to pass forward the revisions. She's taken fourth year and fifth year Spanish and merged curriculum together. So that's the course template piece that you have. The second piece you have is her request for her textbook for the new AP Spanish that will run for the first time also here in the second half of this year. And if possible, having that approval, of course, allows that text to be purchased and the students to have their resources here as we move to the second semester. So the one is a course summary of a Spanish 4-5 course. And the second piece that you have is the textbook purchase information.
So this item is being brought to the board under information, but since we are moving closer to the February 4th start of the second semester, if the board's okay with it, I would look to move that under, to, for the board to take action this evening so that we can get started on that. So I would entertain a motion, if the board's not, not opposed to that, I would entertain a motion to approve, we'll do the course template first.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Brousse, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky, any discussion? Hearing none, I can do a voice vote here, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and we'll move on to the actual purchase of the textbooks. I would also entertain a motion to approve the purchase of those.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, or I'm sorry, Dr. Zimmerman, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. I do need a roll call vote on this, please Paula.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger for Sarah?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is additional district committees, Dr. Pollenstock, I'll turn it over to you.
For the board's consideration, administration would like the board to consider a education committee that would be a similar committee to what we currently have with our policy committees. Would have standing meeting times, have representation from the staff, the board, as well as the community and possibly students. The, the purpose of the committee would be a venue for the administration to share information about curriculum. The purpose of the committee would be a venue for the administration to share information about curriculum innovations that are happening at the state and national level to just develop a deeper understanding of those, as well as some of the direction in which we're looking to go with the curriculum and programming in the school district. That would be an opportunity for us to gather some feedback from stakeholders, incorporate that feedback into what might ultimately be proposed to the school board for action. It's also a place where if the community or board members want to learn more or ask us to examine or take a look at some component of our curriculum, curriculum program, we can do that and be able to present that to the committee. It's, it's certainly something that, you know, we would be a precursor to the action and presentation that would come before the board, but we would be able to better refine what the board would like to see coming forward in the future. The second committee is a facilities planning committee, this is a committee that did exist 10 years ago as we were looking at some renovations and new construction in the district. And since then, the beginning of my tenure, we've had an ad hoc committee to take a look at HVAC modernization. As we've been reviewing the proposals with that committee, we see that there are many needs that need to be addressed in the district and it would be helpful to have a body to take a look at all of those needs, help administration to prioritize those needs in terms of what would need to be done or could be completed and what order. And that, so we can also start to look to how we budget and not just for the year, but in anticipation of possibly seeking some additional funding for these projects. This would also help really our community stakeholders also understand that this is the direction of the district, what we're, we're looking to do, so it's not just an announcement of some or one particular enhancement or renovation that occurs in any of the buildings or our facilities and grounds.
All right, so the board will definitely consider this, it's been kind of a longstanding trend that the president meets with each individual board member to discuss committee assignments. Typically that happens at the end of December or beginning of January, I've kind of held off on that just as we consider adding these two committees. So my plan is to sit down with each board member, maybe not actually sit down face-to-face, but via Zoom or on the phone to discuss these things and, you know, I'll kind of open the floor, again, it's an informational item, but if any of the board members have any questions or feedback on these committees, I'll kind of open up the floor for any discussion.
We think it might be worth considering maybe subcommittees of the education committee because thinking for myself, I've really enjoyed the times I've gotten to have conversations about STEM curricula, but I would totally defer to, you know, Virginia, for example, for anything related to, to the English language arts, so. Also, there might be some opportunity to do different meeting times, like, you know, not the same committee meeting all the time, but if there's a, a time when we're just talking elementary and then a time when we're talking secondary career, college readiness, that sort of thing. Mary ran a committee where we talked about career readiness maybe two years ago, and a lot of that, actually, we did end up talking about what makes sense for a track for students who want to enter the workforce and how can we, we help them earlier on, getting them introduced to things, maybe, you know, like the visits we do in middle school and things. So maybe there could be subcommittees.
Jen, is this something you'd like to bring back to the board, you know, to further discuss just tonight, again, informational item, let us think about it and bring it back, or are you looking for definite direction this evening?
Um, I don't think we need the direction this evening, I mean, certainly with your conversations with each school director, that would be helpful to, you know, see that there's interest, I can certainly flesh out and share with the board, you know, what the composition of the committee might be, you know, just pretty much reviewing what I've just shared here orally. I do also like the idea of the subcommittees where, you know, again, you can harness the energy and the interests of people who have a particular expertise or passion in that area to be able to do that, so, you know, can certainly see even if there's an education committee with that, breaking out into smaller groups. With the facilities planning committee, you know, one of the considerations there since, you know, we have the list of the things that, you know, have been discussed that need to be done in the district, I think what we, what administration would look for is some vision in where do we want to be in three years, five years, eight years, 10 years? How and when will these projects happen and what order? Because our task then besides having them happen will also be to think about that in terms of how a budget is built with the anticipation of those expenditures and, you know, and hopefully to be able to look at where we may be able to self-fund some of these projects or look to grants and other sources revenue to be able to fund them. So that very well also may be a topic that just remains for the entire board. Because, you know, we're coming upon, you know, needing to make some decision points right now, at least with the HVAC, so it would be helpful for us to have that.
All right, then, over the next few weeks, as we have those discussions, as far as interest for the board serving on different committees, we will continue these discussions and, you know, see where some interest might lie as far as these additional committees, so, any other questions? All right, we will move on to the next item, the 2021-22 Sun Tech operation, operating budget. Dr. Pollencheck or Mrs. Brous, anything you guys would like to introduce this to the board?
No, it's pretty much there, Mary, if there's, there's anything that you would like, you think that the board would like attention towards?
No, you sent the budget out, so it's $7.3 million, and our share is $835,000 some odd hundred dollars, I don't have that exact figure, I did have it, but, yeah, it's, we could have some more students going near, so we need to get a drive on to try and get more students there, more students we send brings our, our costs down. But we go on a formula, and I know I talked to Kathy Swob about this several years ago, and actually, with our size school, we are sending basically quite a few, which is, we could send a couple more, but we are within our quota of sending students over there. So right now it's a little hard because there's, right now there's three classes that have been shut down because of COVID, but they're back in session physically now, so let's hope we have a better year this year for everybody.
The, the only thing I would share is, you know, they are also looking at some renovation projects, roofing project that seems to never end, really trying to take a look at a conservative solution for what will keep the space warm, safe and dry currently, and then if there's any change or expansion, that wouldn't be money that wasn't well-spent for this given time, so it, they, they struggle with many of the things that other school districts do, too, with aged buildings that need a lot of work, and it's not just as simple as one thing that needs to be fixed, it turns into multiple things. Jen certainly does work with the other superintendents for some guidance, and there's a lot of sometimes going back to the drawing board, so I think, you know, within all of their costs, I, I feel comfortable to say that they, they are very aware of the funding that comes from the school districts and they try and spend it as judiciously as possible.
Yes, they do.
All right, so board, that's there for your review. And moving on to the next item, the board president's report, the only item this evening, I did want to announce Act 55, the school director training, the Act 55 of 2017, did state that any new directors or newly appointed directors did have to require, or did have to fulfill a requirement training, all of the board members that were new to the board as of 2019 did meet the requirement, we do have those certificates on file at the school in accordance to the Act 55, so that's my only item of the president's report, and thank you for the board members who did that and did that in, in time, so that's on file there. Mrs. Moser, I'll turn it over to you for the assistant superintendent's report.
You, myself, I'll unmute myself so I can speak, you've already received my written report tonight. I highlighted three areas, ELL students that we've mentioned a couple of times this evening. I share with you that we have 61 English language learners this year, we have two new ESL programs, I'm sorry, one new ESL program specialist in K-5 Elementary, and one newly assigned high school ESL program specialist, our German teacher, Mrs. Nicole Meyer, is working this year with our high school ELL students. We have a lot of hands working together to support these students that I reference in my paragraph that you have at your place, and as Dr. Pollencheck already mentioned, there is no waiver to forget the test this year or forgive the test, they will sit for their tests of English proficiency, they have moved it back from the much too early in a year, January, February, to an April deadline for administering it. We certainly also want to delay a while in giving it to give our students more opportunity to work this school year. We have an additional layer of challenge, 16 of our students are currently studying virtually, rather than onsite with us, and so that adds some more challenge as we work with them to bring them the instruction for their language proficiency. The second area that I highlighted is an ongoing year-long effort to move our title program at Kelly Elementary from serving what's called a targeted population with screening tests and eligibility requirements to a broader-based program that can serve more students in the school. Mr. Rule and his staff are working on a comprehensive program to really design and deliver what's called layers of interventions and supports MTSS by its acronym, and in order for us to move our program from target to what's called school-wide title, we have to engage in a year-long planning process, we were already doing much of that in order to bring forward the changes that we're working on, so it seemed to be a right time to also apply for the waiver that would allow us to do so. You cannot be a school-wide title program without a larger population of economically disadvantaged families, but you can apply to have that percentile qualification, percentage qualification waived, we are starting that process, and again, I have some information there for you on my summary. And the last piece that I chose to bring forward tonight because as we've mentioned, we're moving toward the second semester in our school year, it's important to reach out again to our families who are choosing to study by virtual programming in our e-school and offer a point of reentry if that is at all something that they and/or their families are interested in, and so we've put a survey out, we've asked for them to indicate what they would like to do, we need to not only enroll the students in classes, but we want to know how to go forward with that, and we also look to speak with our teachers who have been serving as teachers of record in the virtual courses, and so again, all the planning and organizing to best prepare for the second half of the year, and I share some of that information with you as well. Thank you, Mr. Fetzer.
Thank you. We'll move on to board liaison and committee reports, anybody have anything to share with the board?
Yes, the JOC men over at Sun Tech in January, and basically Jen just filled us, gave us a report on the education model and referenced the guidelines of Department of Health, she also discussed a welding canopy in our welding department out for outside, when they have to do outside welding because of the weather, you know, some problems with that, with, we wanted our children that go there to build it, but there's insurance issues, liability issues, so we were discussing that, and also like Paula, or Jen and I referenced earlier, the roofie, and we had some personnel issues we discussed, it was a very short meeting.
Thanks, Mary.
CSIU is meeting next Wednesday, and you have the report from December, which I think we've actually already gone through.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Any other reports? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, are there any items that anybody would like to have removed and voted upon separately? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the revised personnel report.
So moved, second.
Moved by Mrs. Brous, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brous?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll move on to director's comments, I'll just open the floor for anybody to jump in.
Glad to have the kids back in session and staff.
Board, anything else? All right, we'll move on to citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items, John, are there any comments? And items?
Nope, we do not have any comments to the board on non-agenda items this evening.
All right, then I will move on to adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved, second.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Stanton, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried and meeting adjourned.